Thank you, everybody, and welcome to our seventh annual Meet the Board of Education Candidates Night. We would like to start first by having Chris Finnegan, who is our East Brunswick Education Association Government Relations Chair, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please run. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So my name's Dana Zimbicki. I'm the president of the East Brunswick Education Association, and I so appreciate you all being here. And this is a very unusual Board of Ed race in that we have 10 candidates. What a good problem to have, right? To have 10 people that are willing to put their name in the ring, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy this session tonight. Because we do have 10, we're going to keep the time really tight and really on point. So we are not going to have our candidates do any personal introduction. Instead, you can read about them. They submitted their introductions in the lovely brochure that was created by our office manager, Janie Morena, back there. So you can read about them at home. So we're just going to skip that. We are going to be doing a combination of questions where each candidate has 1 minute and 30 seconds, and we're going to do some lightning round questions as well. All of the questions were submitted through the Google form that we had online. I'm going to let Chris speak a little bit to that, and then we're going to get started.
Yes, we take questions that we've gotten from the community and then just curate them and try and condense them as much as we can because we always get, you know, more questions than we can ask. So we try to cover as many of the bases as we can from the community input that we get. And the format that we're going to do, you know, with a small number of questions through the large number of candidates is we're just going to pull a name out of the box, and that person will get to go first, and then we'll just go, you know, in order and wrap back around. This way, everybody has an equal chance to answer the first question. So with that being said, we'll pull our first name and...
So good evening and welcome, and thank you to the East Brunswick Education Association for once again holding this very resourceful event for the community. And as Chris and Dr. Zimbicki said, we are off and running. So your first round, 15 seconds. Please tell us why you are running. And our first person up will be Jennifer Figaroa.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Figaroa. I'm running for the Board of Education because I feel that our schools need a positive change. Our teachers and our students deserve to optimal conditions for learning. Everyone within the school community deserves to feel accepted and respected.
Great, thank you. All right, and then we'll go down the line. We're ready for you. We're going to go down the line, and I believe next to you is Dr. Falco, correct? Oh, Dr. James, I'm sorry.
Dr. Falco's on the other side.
Gotcha.
A little confusing. So I'm running to be an advocate for children and community. Communication, curriculum, and facilities are three words that motivate my campaign. We are stronger when we collaborate and engage in dialogue to make productive changes. I have the skill set and the track record of cooperation needed to help move our schools forward. Thank you.
Mr. Donish?
Hi, my name is Brhaneen Donish, and I think the reason that I'm running is for perspective. I think that I remember what it was like to be the bottom of the pyramid. I graduated only two years ago, and I think that there needs to be more connection between what the community wants and what they're able to convey to the Board of Education and what actually happens.
Okay, great. Mr. Levitt?
I'm Goswami.
Mr. Goswami.
So I believe that our greatest assets here in East Brunswick are our teachers, students, school, and our community. And I'm here to run and represent you all on the East Brunswick Board of Education because I feel that, like, all the schools are right now in jeopardy, and unnecessary discord and derision are happening right now. So I believe that the future must be built upon the incredible success that we have been able to achieve thus far, not built upon...
Thank you. All right, Mr. Levitt?
The reason I'm running is because I love East Brunswick. My kids, two of them, have gone through our schools and wound up in great colleges and with great careers because of our schools. I've dedicated about 17 years of my volunteer time to the East Brunswick Education Foundation, learned a lot about our schools, and lately I'm seeing some things starting to slip a little bit, and I want to help make sure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Braun?
Hi. Just real quick, raise your hand if you're a staff or a teacher. How many teachers do we have? Yes, thank you very much. You are the reason I'm here. You are the ones who make the magic happen every single day because you're the ones closest to the kids.
Thank you. And Mr. Pan?
Hi, my name is Wilbur Pan. I'm running for the Board of Ed because I'm looking to give back. I'm a parent, a pediatric oncologist, and an educator with the experience and a track record that shows I can bring positive change to our schools. As a pediatrician, I want all of our kids to succeed and be happy, and that's why I'm looking to give back, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Reese?
Good evening, my name is Barbara Reese. Making sure that all our learners have access to the tools they need to succeed in academics, athletics, and the arts is the driving force behind my efforts as a board member. It is that strong belief in making a high-quality education available to all our students that continues to motivate me today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Figaroa?
Good evening. I want to take a quick second to thank Dr. Zimbicki and EBA for hosting this event this evening. What I am here for is I am looking for positive change for students, families, and staff. Give them the resources and support that they need to continue to be successful.
Thank you. And then Dr. Falco?
Good evening, neighbors. I'm here because I care. I care about your kids, I care about my kids, I care about you, I care about our tax dollars, and I'll work hard for you.
Great, thank you. All right, so we're off to our first question of the evening, and this question, you will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond. Our first person up will be Mr. Levitt. The past year has increased in tension from the community and many heated discussions at board meetings between the board, administration, and the public. How would you use your role as a board member to repair these relationships and rebuild trust in the community?
This past year, we were hit with a lot of tough issues that were facing the board and the community. First, we had a huge budget deficit, and then we had the yearbook fiasco, for lack of a better term, that really created a lot of tension within the schools. People look to the Board of Ed as a set of leaders to help bring clarity and help understand what's going on in these different places. Questions were asked, and they weren't answered. Explanations weren't given as to why, all of a sudden, we found out there was an $8 million budget deficit. Explanations were given for part of it, but not all of it. So people started to lose trust. We can't afford to lose trust in the Board of Ed and the administration because they're the ones taking care of our kids. Then when we had tension in the schools because of the yearbook, there was a lot of racial tension. We needed some help to make sure that the acceptance between students was built rather than destroyed. And when we would ask questions, we were told, "Not today, not today, maybe tomorrow," until we read it in People Magazine. That erodes trust. Transparency and engagement of the community in every discussion that we can possibly have is what's going to build back the trust between the community and the Board of Education, and that's what I stand for.
Thank you. Dr. Braun?
There needs to be proactive communication, not just reactive communication. A lot of these things that have happened, I think, would not have escalated to the level that they did had the community known ahead of time what was coming. Now, obviously, with the yearbook issue, that spiraled out of control really, really quickly. But again, we should not have been reading about it online. We should have been hearing from our superintendent what was going on. And if you think about this, I mean, our schools are a microcosm of what's going on in the world. I worry a lot with the anniversary that's coming up on October the 7th. What's going to happen in our schools? Are teachers prepared? Do teachers know what to say? You know, there's always good to be proactive and being prepared so that when something happens, you know, you're not caught by surprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pan?
Hi. So I've spent my entire career using communication as a tool for the sake of my patients. And that, I think, is the way that I would go about rebuilding trust with the community should I be lucky enough to make it onto the Board of Education. The reason I focus on this is because clear communication develops a bond between people, organizations, and the Board of Ed and the community. In my... And just to give you some examples of what I've had to do in the past, again, for the sake of my patients, is that it's easy to... It's actually relatively easy to cure cancer in a kid. A kid has leukemia, there's a protocol for it, those protocols work, that's what we do. It's much harder to explain to the family what's going on. And so I've spent hours and hours talking with families about this so that they understand the details of what's going to happen with their child. Because, again, the chemo is the easy part. Getting the parents to trust me is the harder part. Likewise, in my work, I've constantly talked with all members of my team so that we know what the plan is for the kid. And again, that builds trust among the team, that results in better outcomes. And so should I make it onto the Board of Ed, one of the things I am committed to is increasing the avenues of communication, both with the public and with the teachers and ESPs in the system. Because, again, with trust gives us the space to solve the problems that we're going to be facing in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Reese?
There's always room for improvement. Communication is something that I believe very strongly in. We do have committees where teachers are on those committees and make a big difference with the board. There's student climate committees where each school works to make special programming that's specified for the needs of that school. We also are working on a student life committee. That's something that I'll be chairing, hopefully, in the future. And that's to bring together students to tell us what are their concerns, what are their quality of life issues. I've had two students who also graduated from the high school and hear what their concerns are and find ways to help make improvements and give them opportunities to give back in the community and to feel their opportunities for them to connect with the senior citizens, with other members of the community. I also think we should have more community forums. We had last year a big community forum. People came down to the high school and gave their feedback about a lot of issues. I also feel that we should have more parent universities with specific themes so that students and parents can hear more about the school. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Figaroa?
Yes, this is a great question to open up the evening. I feel that, once you lose trust, it's very difficult building it back. And I think the important thing now is to realize that we are one community. So the fact that there are people with passion up here, people in the community with passion about making this community even better, making our school district as strong as it can be, and making sure that we take care of our families, our students, and give our teachers the resources that they need. I think to build that back, we need great communication. We need to have people come out and to tell us how they're feeling. We had, a few years ago, might be now close to a decade ago, we had a community night at Hammershold. At the time, it was Hammershold Middle School. And community members came, and they wrote on the walls different aspects of what they thought was important. And we spent years, really, the last years after that, really trying to address those things. That was the community coming out saying, "We need help. We want to tell you how we're feeling." I don't think we know how the community feels right now. And that's for the Board of Education, that's important that that communication and that accountability is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Falco?
So it's really important that we repair trust in this community. I think it takes not just communication, but humility, understanding what our organizational chart should look like in this district, understanding that you are our shareholders. You are the people that drive your elected officials to make their decisions and create policy. If we are not listening to you, we are not your voice. We're not up here for our own purposes. We are here to represent you. And I think that that is the purest form of trust you can have, is that open communication with humility to hear where we can improve and then go forward together with camaraderie. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Figaroa?
So being a teacher, building relationships is the most important thing in my classroom, with my students, and then also with parents. People want to be heard. They want to be listened to. They want to feel that what they say is important. So listening to everyone's concerns is a huge part of bringing healing and bringing the community together. Also looking for solutions, having accountability for any of the problems that people are feeling or seeing within our school systems. And bringing the community and the school districts together, not keeping it secret and having it feel like it's separate. I think that's how you start to build trust and make repairs to the damage that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. James?
Like so many of you, I moved to this community for our public schools. So building back trust is of critical importance to me. I'm proud that so many families from around the world want to be here, and no small part because of our educational system. We sometimes say that teaching is the profession that creates all other professions, and it's true. We're shaping our students' futures, and as an educator, I truly believe in the transformative power of a quality public education. The question for me is what can I do as a board member to keep things moving forward? What I know is that when you spend a lot of money and you deal with people's children, you inevitably invoke ire and you create controversy. We've certainly seen that this election cycle, and I admit, at times, I've been demoralized. But my strengths lie in building community, in bringing people from different groups together to find compromise for common goals. This is the spirit that I will continue to bring to the board. And I will continue to focus on communication because I agree, this is the key to building community trust. I've been focused on that in my very short time in the board, and we've made real progress putting our email on the website, getting an autoresponder. I've suggested that we reach out to the community by going to meetings. I want to keep doing this work. I don't see myself as separate from you. I see myself as one of you. I'm a part of this community. I'm an educator and a mom. I will listen to you, and I will work hard for you.
Great, thanks very much. Mr. Donish?
So I think that, in regards to the increased tension that we've experienced in our community, I mean, we can find that just by having our daily conversations with people. I keep very close contact with a lot of students that are still in the high school, a lot of the seniors. And that, like, demoralizing weight that they experienced over this past year was definitely felt. And the problem is that when you don't understand what's going on and why things are happening, you look for other avenues to explain it. And what happened was rumors arose about why things were happening. And when that happens, it just constantly demoralizes students. And secondly to that, educators were demoralized. Now, you can only imagine that when you're an educator who's demoralized in a system that refuses to give you answers to your questions, it becomes hard to impart inspiration that is so critical to students' learning in your classroom environment. Now, I hear a lot about how increased communication is what we need. And I think that, although it's important, it asks a lot of the community to do. And frankly, I think that it's more on the board to go out and to seek responses from the community, to take that initiative upon ourselves as people who have come here to find our voice in your voices, as the culmination of your voices. So I think that although increased communication is important, we need to be the ones to take that step forward, not ask the community to.
And Mr. Goswami?
So I will say, let's stop pointing what went wrong and instead remotes and how we, as a community, together work towards it. So if you have realized that everyone is talking about the budget cuts, issues, finances, right? So budget cuts are not suddenly happening. It is happening inside in the industry, from IT to the banks to everywhere it is budgets are cutting. And people have to plan properly, to have long-term strategies, just not to do a short-term strategy for a quick wins. People have to plan for it, and for planning for it, we have to have a proper financial analyst who can do proper planning so that these kind of things, which we are discussing today with 10 members talking the same thing, will not happen again. So I will say that, let's work towards it and take the school forward. The school has to move forward. We cannot stop at the same place and continue discussing. And we have to think about our teachers, our parents, our community, our kids, and everyone. And I also moved to this town five years back because I want to serve this community, and I know about these schools. These are the best schools in the town, Blue Ribbon Schools. And we have to keep that Blue Ribbon thing and take it forward and make it one of the best in the district. And this is our town, our kids, and our family, and we are part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question. We're going to start with Dr. Falco. Much of the attention in the district is on the new or renovated high school, but there has been impact to Hammershold and Churchill. These facilities are being utilized in ways that they were not built for, and the consequences are being realized. What is your plan for our upper-grade facilities, not including the high school? And how does increased or decreased enrollment over the next few years change that plan?
So I'm a graduate of East Brunswick in 2001. There were over 600 people in my graduating class, probably close to 700. There was an average of 21 children in my class in elementary level. The average district enrollment for the last decade or so has vacillated between 8,400 and 8,100 students. We've seen less since COVID. We are currently sitting under 8,200 students. Demographic studies that were done, which include Vermella and all current construction projects, this was done in January 2023, suggests that there are 472 students that will matriculate into our district over the next several years as construction is finished and families move in. We have always had a capacity, since before this, of 9,300. Now, that is a theoretical max of every classroom that is based on square footage, that doesn't account for grades. What we need to do is we need to look at the assets of this district. We need to look at the land we have and consider what options exist for using facilities like Hammershold, which are set up to be a wonderful science lab. If we had a magnet school, for example, we could use that lab because right now we have fifth graders who don't know what to do with a Bunsen burner. So we need to analyze our assets. We need to consider what's important to the community to maintain class size. And we need to redistrict to ensure that all children have equal opportunity to class size and education quality. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Figaroa?
So our aging facilities aren't large enough in many capacities to support all of our students. There is overcrowding at Churchill at this time, especially within the 7th grade this year. And I know that there is enrollment that is increasing every day. I believe that the 9th graders should be at the high school. I know we're not talking specifically about it, but they need to be there. They're part of the high school, they deserve to be there. I know my daughter's in 10th grade, and she felt separated last year, not being part of the high school as a freshman in high school. I definitely think that we need to take a look at what's happening within our schools, look at what our facilities do hold, and look to further make some of these changes so that class sizes remain small instead of over 30 in a class in 7th grade at this point. The teachers need to feel supported so that they are able to teach the curriculum. So yes, I believe that there's something... We need to take a look at what's happening within our larger schools at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. James?
Thank you. When we talk about facilities, to me, we're talking about the possibility of a four-year high school redistricting and the use of Hammershold as a fifth-6th grade school. Of course, I want our children to have the best facilities possible while being mindful of taxes, which is why we need feedback from the community. There are some good reasons to invest in a four-year high school, including our 9th grade test scores being counted toward our high school rankings, the possibility of saving money on activities busing, and keeping us competitive. However, any new or renovated high school is a huge decision, and we need to continue to provide data to the public. We have temporary classroom units at Churchill, that's the reality. You can use them for five years, or you have to stop using them or submit a plan to the state. So we are under pressure, and we have to understand that. That's why we must also deal with the need to redistrict. We are not currently overcapacity. Our elementary school class sizes are an average of 16, but our enrollment is uneven. We may be able to save money by looking at ways to streamline our bus routes once we draw our lines to reflect the current population distribution. I have a son at Hammershold. We do not have an age-appropriate recreational space. This is... He just laughed. This is something that the PTA has been working on there. When we change our facilities, we impact our students, and we absolutely must realize that point first and think ahead about how to structure them to maximize student benefit.
Thank you. And Mr. Donish?
So I think that when we're talking about our facilities, especially the high school, right? I felt it as a student, that it's hard to take your freshman year of high school seriously when you're not actually in a high school. So, I mean, it's inconceivable to think that, from Churchill, to think that, "Oh, these are my grades, they're mattering now, and they're going to matter when I apply to college." Because the reality is, your environment shapes how you think about things. And if I'm not in a four-year high school where I'm sitting next to juniors, seniors, sophomores who are thinking about college, I'm not thinking about college as well. So I definitely see the need for us to transition at some point to a four-year high school. But I understand that we have to live in the present and understanding that the reality is that Churchill... The high school can only be the high school right now. So considering Hammershold and Churchill and the idea that we're using temporary classrooms, there's the idea that we can convert existing rooms that are within the high school that are used for miscellaneous purposes into classrooms so that we can distribute class sizes to keep them small so that our educators do not feel overstressed by the increased amount of children in their classroom that they have to pay attention to, and so that they can provide better education on a singular student basis because each student needs a different kind of attention within a classroom in order to perform well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goswami?
So when it comes to overcrowding in our high schools, we need to look into no further than the reality that 9th grade students have to currently be educated in a middle school due to lack of space at the high school. Countless high school freshmen for years now have had to head their physical transition to high school, and all that goes to differ due to the lack of adequate space. As we go forward, we must recognize that the education contains within it the most imperative to handle, unique challenges that will come up, characterize the lives of each generation, and inherit this earth after we are gone. So it was once said that education is the silver bullet. Education is everything, and education needs monumental changes. And schools should be palaces, not small things. So I will say, I will support, and I will require support from the town, from the people, that it has to go through a referendum. It cannot be one person or board's decision. It has to be town's decision to decide whether we need a school or we don't need a school. Again, we need to see that the school is also utilized at the optimum capacity. If the school has a 9,000-plus capacity, we have to use it first, then think about the rest. Because there are people who are paying taxes, I am one of those. So I cannot just pay taxes for a school which is not required right now. If we're fixing it helps, then we will go for fix. If it not, we talk to people, we will do that, as the town says. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt?
Yes. Quickly, I do believe that the 9th graders do belong at the high school. I think most high schools in the state are four years, and it makes much more sense for freshmen to be with upperclassmen. But looking at the middle schools right now, Hammershold was built for a very specific purpose with the house structure. And it served us really well when it was a 6th and 7th grade school because the students could be in one pod and not have to run all the way across the school to be able to get to their classes. In 5th and 6th grade, it's not being used the same way because there's not that much change going on. However, there is a lot of change between classes going on at Churchill, and sometimes kids are running from one end of the building to the other. One solution may be to swap schools. Put the 5th and 6th graders at Churchill, 5th grade on one end, 6th grade on the other, with the gym in between, and then really use the Hammershold space for what it was designed for. In terms of our elementary schools, we saw a presentation by Mr. Juliana that most of the schools are not overcrowded. There are some classrooms that are a little high in... They're a little high in capacity. But if we redistrict, we can save money on busing. We can bring kids closer to where they live, and we may be able to find a building that we can use for another purpose for programs that we want to have at the high school but can't fit there right now. So there's a lot of creative... So there's a lot of creative thinking that we could do as a board about how we can use space.
Thank you. Dr. Braun.
Yes, 20 years ago, I was on an ad hoc committee where we were discussing, um, expanding all of the schools. And we had to decide, could we do this? Would it be feasible for us to expand the high school? And how many elementary schools could we expand? And at that time, the decision was made, we, we just couldn't do it all. And now, of course, I feel bad because 20 years later, gosh, it would have been nice to have that new high school 20 years ago. But we just couldn't do it. Uh, instead, we built new Hammerold, and we were able to expand Central and Lawrence Brook. And then, of course, we had Memorial School go up in flames, needed to be rebuilt. So we've already done quite a bit back in, you know, at that time in doing construction, but we haven't done enough since. I can tell you, because I taught at Churchill. I taught in the North Building. Adding an extra 700 kids up there, there's not enough room. There's just plain old not enough room. When those TCU's were put in, the reason they weren't put in the elementary schools was because the core facilities weren't expanded, the cafeteria, the gym, the hallways. Now we've got a real problem because the facilities weren't expanded at Churchill. Kids don't have enough time to eat their lunch. And we have to do something, and we have to do it quickly.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pan.
Yeah, so this is a really interesting question. Uh, over the past few months, I've spent a lot of time walking around town, talking to hundreds of people face to face, answering their questions, and usually the high school comes up. And those of you who might, might have talked to me about this know that my first take on the high school situation is actually going to be my, my first take on the question of what to do with Hammerold in Churchill, which is step one is to get extensive input from the community in terms of what they want, like, would like to see in reconfiguring any three, all three of those, um, buildings. Um, because without input from the community, without understanding what the parents want, uh, we're not going to get anywhere with any solution that we propose. The second thing that we would have to do is get really good, hard data on future trends in student population. I know there are mechanisms to do, to do that. But it is, again, critical to know where those trends are, are going, even if, even if it takes a couple shots at gathering data to see what the, um, actual trends may, may be. Um, after that, um, then we can talk about recon, uh, uh, re, uh, redistricting, reconfiguring, uh, the schools. The idea of Mr. Levitt had about flipping the two schools, I found fascinating. But the big thing for the, um, upper elementary school and the middle, and the junior high school is to make sure that the facility is, um, appropriate for the kids', uh, kids' ages. Because the transition from fourth to fifth grade, when it includes moving from your elementary school that you're used to to a new building, that's very, that's very difficult.
Your time is up. Thank you. And Ms. Reese.
So first of all, I want to make it clear when, when there's any referendum, it's really up to the people. It's up to the community, what the community needs. And that includes our teachers and our students. We need to listen to our teachers. It doesn't make sense to build a new facility, whether it be the high school or any other building, and not ask the teachers how the rooms should be configured. Because you're the ones that do the work day in and day out. We can spend tons of money on maker spaces and all kinds of things. But if the teachers don't feel that it's a worthwhile endeavor, then that's number one. We have to get input from the community, including all our teachers, all our students, and all our families. The referendum is an important, uh, aspect of it. But also, just to re, touch on some points here, there have been facility projects going on without the need for referendum. My daughter just graduated the high school. I know that building needs extra work, but we're doing our best without. For example, the roof at Churchill's been replaced. Rooftop units which are for ventilation have been replaced at several schools. Energy savings programs, media centers. So there is work being done. I don't want to give you that impression. But I agree that we need to turn to our community to look at ways to better enhance the, the places where our kids and our teachers are every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Figueroa will end this question with you.
Thank you. Let me take you back to 2016. That was the first time that I could recall us speaking about what do we do at the high school, 2016. By 2020, we had official meetings. Meetings that discuss what should be done, how should we do it, where are we going? By 2021, we were spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans, on preparation, on what to do. And at this point, I don't think anybody really knows what we're doing. So I am, I have some grave concerns. I really do. I think that, uh, there's been a lot of time and money that's already been wasted. Uh, I think we need to find out exactly what happened, where we're at. I'm not sure that the plans created a year or two ago would fit, especially in, in terms of even the costs are different than a year or two ago, if we are just to do any kind of construction. I think this community really has to be included in anything that's going to happen, especially if there is a referendum. Are we going to put our ninth graders at the high school? I believe we need to. I think it's something that's important for them. I think it'll cut down on costs on transportation and other things as well. There's also better resources there for those kids who are taking those upper-level courses. And finally, and I know my time is running out, I'm not a big fan of redistricting for redistricting sake. I think if you have students in, in, living in areas that are closer to a school but go to a different school now, that could be considered.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go on to our next question. And Dr. Figueroa, we start with you. So this past year, the district faced an $8 million budget deficit that caused many painful cuts and reductions in services. With state aid potentially remaining flat or even decreasing this year, how would you deal with another budget deficit?
Well, from what I understand, we are already looking at that. The superintendent has already said that the cuts that happened this year, look for more cuts next year. Uh, I don't believe that is the way to really handle it, quite frankly. I think you have to be innovative. I think you have to think of ways that we can, um, accrue additional funding, whether it be through grants, state, county. I think we have to work with other districts too, to, to really lobby our legislators um, in terms of, uh, the school. And I'm not 100% sure that I agree with the school funding formula the way it is now. I think that might have to be looked at. That's a, that's a bigger picture item. But I do think we have to look at how schools are, are funded in the long run. But I do think that innovation, look at where, where, what is important to us? I would, I would guess that most of us who moved our families here did it because education was critical to why we came here. We wanted to make sure our kids got the best education possible. So let's focus on that. Let's focus on the academics, the education, the, so, the whole total educational experience for each child. And let's make sure we give the resources to our teachers. And hopefully, we won't have many cuts to teachers because we really can't afford that anymore. But I think our teachers need the resources, the professional development, and the support they need to get, to do what they have to do and to really help our students and our families out.
Thanks very much. And we're going to move on to Dr. Falco.
So last year, the operating budget was $197 million, that $8 million overage. 1.3 million of that was a reduction in state aid. Governor Murphy's funding formula put $11.3 billion into our education system. However, this past year, 140 districts lost money. This was a seven-year plan. We knew it was coming. Um, I think there's some challenges in the funding formula specific to our district. That's going to be an uphill battle for a long time without resolution at the state level. The state, uh, funding formula accounts for 15.7% of our demographic to be special education need. East Brunswick is known for how amazing we are for all of our students. We have about a 20% demographic. That's 78.5% of the funding that we would receive from the state is being allocated to students just in theory, if you look at that exact number. So we have a tw- about a 21.5% hold, fill for 1,600 students with 8,100 enrolled. Um, we need to have proactive planning. We need a three-year fiscal plan that accounts for economic growth, um, but also the inflation in a, um, post-catastrophic global event. You know, we were still at 6% last I checked. We need to account for these and look at our assets within the district, and then also consider grants, fundraising, and all of the avenues in which they don't affect the taxpayers. Thank you.
And Mrs. Figueroa.
When these budget cuts were announced last year, it is true that they said that coming in, um, '25, '26, there are more cuts to come. I don't know how many more cuts can, we, we could afford. I know, um, just listening to the community, going to back-to-school night, hearing all of the changes that have occurred in our schools where there aren't enough textbooks. There aren't any online textbooks for the students to use. Online resources have been cut. So looking to cut more where that directly affects students is a terrible idea. We cannot support education in, going in that direction. I think we do need to look at what is actually, where the spending is actually coming from, what we are spending on, and take a look at where other cuts will come versus directly coming from the schools, from the teachers, and those resources. I think looking into, um, grants and any additional funding that we could take a look to see how we can support our schools is going to be really critical this, this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. James.
As a union advocate and legislative representative, I have experience with public school budgeting and have spent many years as an advocate for fully funding public education, working alongside state and, and local elected officials to bring in more money. Due partly to the full implementation of the state funding formula, we will face another funding shortage next year. We're thinking that could be as much as $4 million. And as others have said, we are not the only school that is suffering. We need to advocate to change the funding formula. But realistically, we cannot do this in one legislative cycle, which is why we must seek out another bundle of money from our legislators in order to fill the gap. We must also look at contracts to see where there is overspending or duplication. And I believe in reaching out to the public sooner so there are fewer surprises. I was not on the board when we took this difficult budget vote. But when we did get additional funds from the state, it was not everything we wanted. But we voted to focus on staff, to put, uh, 10 of our secretary, nine of our secretaries, sorry, from 12, 10 months back to 12 months. It was an important development. I had the opportunity to work with these secretaries as PTA president, and I can say they're really critical to keeping our system running. We always talk about protecting our certified and uncertified staff. And when we have to make difficult decisions, I believe we should do that. We should focus on mental health, focus on keeping staff, do better planning, inform the public, and advocate with the legislature.
Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Donish.
So it's very clear that budgeting is a zero-sum affair. That the money that we get is the money that we can spend. And I think that although it's important to find creative ways to raise money, the money that we have is the money that we have. So what I want to focus on is the allocation of that money. And I think that there's several steps that we have to take. And it's very important that the chronology of those steps is maintained because the, the bottom line is, we don't want to cut programs. We have programs because they're important to some subset of our student population, of our educator population, and that they are required. So what I'm, so it's going to take some elbow grease from the Board of Education that it, we're going to have to reassess the contracts that the board currently employs to provide different services in the schools. And we have to understand where we're overspending and where we're allocating money where it realistically isn't needed. Right? That's the first line is our, like, how can we spend money smart and maintain the same level of service without decreasing quality? The second thing is, maybe we need to cut some, uh, we have to cut funding to certain services that aren't needed. And the way that I, uh, will propose finding that out is asking the community. But more importantly, asking the teachers and the students. They know what the money is being used for. They know what's needed alongside the parents. But I don't think that we communicate with those people enough to really figure out what the money is needed for.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donish. We're going to move on to Mr. Goswami.
So, uh, we should prepare for the worst and then hope for the best. So as with all public institutions, budget cuts are nothing un-unfortunate. It is happening, and it is a reality, and that haunts all of us, not only the school board. Everyone, the people, the school board, teachers, members, families, everyone is impacted today. Every day we hear that job cuts, happening from hundred thousand jobs are cut in last one year. Today also, we, we heard about Amazon job cuts. So this is nothing a new thing. This is, uh, reality now. So as your representative on the East Brunswick Board of Education, you can be confident that I will bring bear to every ounce of my extensive experience in the financial services industry, in financial planning, and make sure that we always hire and maintain the best financial consultants to make long-term strategies and also to ensure that the short-term wins are not being focused on. We should focus on the long term to save money, bucket the money, plan how we will do things. Additionally, I will make sure that I will bring this, some expertise to bear in order to ensure that we as a board and all of you as our teachers, students, and families are just as informed as I am as it pertains to the financial health of our schools. So that together, we can all work towards our shared goal to protecting a bright and promising future for our families so that every student has a fair shot at his or her success regardless of where their talent may lie. That being said, I want to be very clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goswami. We're going to move on to Mr. Levitt.
When we talk about financials at the board level, there's, we always have to have the community in mind. The community should not have been surprised in April of this year that there was such a shortfall. It was really shocking to everybody who heard it. We have ample finance staff who should be modeling these things all year. We should, we have a superintendent who is very connected at the state level, who should be lobbying for us and should have been able to bring us that information. But yet, we didn't know it was coming, or if we did know, it wasn't shared with the community. When things like this happen, there need to be cuts, and cuts are the last thing that I like to look at. They shouldn't be done in a vacuum. This isn't a game of numbers. It's a game of people and students who are being impacted. So we have a lot of experts in our buildings who need to be consulted, teachers and administrators alike, to make sure that the cuts that are being made are the right ones and that they make sense because they're not supposed to impact our kids. That, that line that it's not going to impact our kids was, um, thrown around a lot and didn't mean a whole lot. We need to think innovatively. We need to lobby for a different formula. The funding in New Jersey is probably the most backwards funding in any state that we have. But think out of the box. Can we wrap our buses and advertise and get revenue there? Can we advertise at the new stadiums we have at the high school? Can we put solar things up at the, in the parking lots at all our buildings? All those things generate revenue. Let's focus on the top, not the bottom.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Braun.
This budget deficit, this issue did not happen overnight. It's taken a few years for us to end up where we are today. If you consider the cost of those temporary classroom units, they cost, I think we're up to $10 million so far in costs. So if you think about what we're short, it's really, a lot of that money was getting sucked up into the TCU's. So it's going to be difficult to try to, I don't want to say undo, but to fix something that big. One of the first things I want to do is talk to the teachers. How many times are, my supervisor would show up with something, and I'm like, why are you buying me this? I don't want that. I want that. Talk to them. The teachers know what's needed. But yet, they're not consulted, the building principals, the same way. We'll be able to cut a little here, cut a little there. Um, I worry very much about the arts programs because as we know, the arts are usually the first ones on the chopping block, as they were this past April, when there was an attempt to cut the fourth-grade band and orchestra program. That's something near and dear to my heart, and that is something I'm definitely going to fight for. And we're going to have to be creative to find ways to close those budget caps wherever we can. We need proactive planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Braun. Dr. Pan.
So I'm going to take a step back to what we were discussing before in terms of communication. And again, communication to me is the key thing that the Board of Education should be doing, both with the community and within the school district, uh, talking to the teachers and the ESPs. Because with communication, you can read trust. And with trust, you now have the space to solve the problems that we, um, face. For something like a budget deficit, which is either the one that we have now, or I believe you asked about a future one, um, collaboration is going to be, uh, key for that. Collaboration with the town leaders, collaboration with our state, uh, leaders. Um, everybody has a vested interest in making sure that we get, uh, through this. In terms of decision-making, it all is about priorities. My priority is excellence in education, and everything flows downhill. in education, and everything flows downhill from there. With that, we definitely need input from our teachers and our ESPs because they're the ones that are providing this, the education to our our students. In terms of things that I could do, I've actually already reached out to state legislators, including Sturdy Lee Stanley, who represents our town, to talk to them about the deficit that we have now and potential solutions. And finally, it's good to remember that we've done this before. In 2010, we had a multimillion dollar budget deficit. We were able to get through it. Where this panel is full of smart, extremely talented people, so is this town. We can fix this. And so it's a good idea to take a deep breath and realize that this is a solvable problem.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pan, and Ms. Reese.
So a couple of points. This school budget, I want to say, was very difficult for for all of us. You know, as East Brunswick was among the hundred schools, school districts, we were not alone in in what's happened here in our district. But of course, as being on the board, this was a very, very difficult time for we, we put a high priority on our teachers, on our staff. We never want to do anything that would put our staff or our students at a disadvantage. But what's happening from the state in their effort to equalize funding to all different townships and different locations is that it's created inequality. And so what happens is we're losing money because our our properties are worth more and because we're making more money as a town. And the state government is basically saying we have to pay a larger share. So yes, advocacy advocacy is important. I too would volunteer to go down to Trenton to speak what's happening to our towns and explain that it's hurting our students. And just for a moment, I would also say that our community programs is working very hard to raise funds in this area, and that's something we can expand. We've had a 45% increase in community programs. It's after-school programming. Facility rentals have been up 50%. And we'll increase our use of shared services. And we do reach out to our legislators, and we do do these things. I know on sometimes online, it seems that we don't, but I only had it a minute and a half. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, to our next question. All right. Dr. James, we're going to start with you. It is the jobs board to oversee the way the district is run. With many new initiatives that have been recently implemented, for example, block scheduling, grade restructuring, and new math programs, how would you as a board member ensure that there is accountability to determine that these programs are working as intended?
Thank you. No easy question to start with. You know, there's a lot to do as a board member. I started coming to board meetings when we had a busing issue in our neighborhood. Brought parents together to advocate for a change in our bus stop. And and once I started going, two years ago, I realized, wow, this is a big job, right? I mean, the board doesn't run the schools, but it tries to make sure that our schools run well, and I take that very seriously. So I'll use assessment as an example of accountability. So assessment isn't everything, but it's an important part of keeping our school's reputation strong. And at a recent board meeting, I inquired about our NJ SLA test scores, which have come up significantly since COVID, but they have stagnated, right? I I do feel, of course, that it's important for board members to hold our administrators accountable for data collection and plans to make our assessments stronger. And we can use annual reviews as an opportunity to evaluate where we are, making sure we stay on track. There was a plan presented at that board meeting, and it was a good analysis. So, you know, let's look at it next year. If we need to pivot, we can pivot. If we need to think about why progress has stalled, then we can talk about that, and we can adapt. We also need to get feedback from parents, like the transition from McGraw-Hill to Envision Math, that was very difficult without the bridge. So part of that accountability was talking to the parents in that age group and saying, what do you need to make this curriculum work?
Thank you very much. Mr. Donish?
So accountability is a really interesting issue because it requires for people on the on the board to actually feel pressure from the community and the things that are implemented. And I think that one of the best ways that we can do that is to extend a hand, which is coming out and kind of hearing and looking and actually seeing what the policies that we implement actually have on the schools. I think that, I mean, I personally, I volunteer for the Waxman Student Scholars Program and the AP Apple Program at the high school, even as an alum. And while in the high school, you can see it. You can see the changes that have made, and they're reflected in the students and the teachers and the support staff. And that's where the effect really lies. And a reflection of how students are feeling is also how parents are feeling. If a student is more stressed, obviously, the parents are going to feel more stressed. So I think that increasing communication, not only between the board and parents, but students and teachers as well, is a great way for us to monitor how our schools are actually feeling. I think that, I think that numbers aren't everything. We can stare at Excel sheets all day, looking at scores and looking at grades. And the problem is they don't tell the whole story. You have to sit down and you have to talk to people, everyone who's affected by our policies, to get an idea of whether or not they're working. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Goswami?
Okay. So I will say that currently, the curriculums and the accountabilities are very important for any board members. We don't make curriculums. We discuss with our teachers, our members of the schools, and the principals, and then come to a curriculum decision. So right now, we, when we do these things, we do in a holistic way. We have to develop the emotional intelligence, resilience, and ethical reasoning for the students. We cannot just build something and the students are stressed out, and then the parents are stressed out. So for me, producing a well-rounded student should have a good curriculum which they are following, and the resilience and the ethic, they should follow the emotional intelligence and the problem-solving skills. Adaptability and the digital literacy are the very important thing today because a lot of kids which currently are studying, if the things or the curriculums are outdated, they are not up to the mark into this cutting-edge, cutting-edge technology days. If they are not having the right curriculum, by the time they are out of the school, they are nowhere. So to have a proper curriculum set for those kids, we should be enabling the school district and our board together to work towards the best curriculum that student can get.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Levitt?
I teach a course in leadership at Rutgers in one of their master's programs. And one of the basic premises we talk about for leaders is in order to get followers, you need to get them to buy into what you want to do. And if they buy in, they're much more likely to follow and go along with it. So let's, let's just talk about how we go about implementing something in our district, or how we should. The first thing we need to do is ask. Ask our stakeholders. So if we're using block scheduling as an example, ask the teachers, how do you feel about doubling the size of your period? What do you think the benefits of it are going to be? What are your fears about it? And do you have any other ideas about how we can execute this? By getting them to buy in, and they have stakeholdership, we're probably going to have not only a much better product, but if you've ever watched the EBA in action, they are a very supportive group of each other, and they will share the good, the bad, and the ugly with each other, and gain the support of what we need to have. So it's about getting accountability at the top level to make sure they're not making decisions in a vacuum. I hear about so many decisions in this district that are made on Route 18 that have never been talked about in the buildings. There needs to be accountability by the board for Central Office to make sure that all stakeholders are involved in order to make sure the best decisions and the wisest decisions are made for the district.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Braun?
As a teacher, we're evaluated with a very strict rubric. I'm sorry to say the D-word, but Danielson model for those teachers out there. Sorry. I don't know what kind of rubric is used for our superintendent. Is there one? I don't know. Because, and the reason I say this, is that when curriculum is rolled out, we need time, teachers need time, to be able to get used to the curriculum, to read the curriculum, to be trained in using the curriculum. You can't just say, okay, here we go, brand-new curriculum, go at it. Doesn't work like that, folks. It's not good for the teachers, and it's certainly not good for the students. I'm curious, when was the last time a climate survey was given to teachers? I'll tell you when. Never. Never. From the Central Office Administration. Because I don't think they want to know what teachers have to say. And that's very, very worrisome. The teachers are the ones, the people that are in the classroom, they are the ones who are closest to the students. They are the ones that make it work. Right now, I feel like there are cracks in the facade. The teachers are the ones who've been holding it all together, but they can't go on like this. They're overwhelmed. There's too much. You can only get so much from a person who's already giving 200%.
Thank you very much, Dr. Braun. And Dr. Pan?
So I'm going to talk about something that all the educators here in online will know about, which is setting clear goals and objectives. We all know as educators that if if you do nothing more than clarify the goals and objectives for a learner, that that learner will improve. And this model applies to all kinds of things. I can speak to this from my personal experience, because when I was at Robert Wood at the Medical School, I was in charge of pediatric medical education. And one of the tasks I was given when I took on that role was to make it so that the students were rating the program better. How did I do that? The things that I did was I set clear goals and objectives to the students, so they knew exactly what we were expecting of them. I also talked to all the faculty and all the, all the staff that in the hospital and the clinics that worked with the students, so that we, they knew what was expected of them. And I talked to all the community pediatricians who took these med students into their offices, so they had a better understanding of what was going on. The pediatric experience went from the worst rated to the best rated in the, in the medical school experience. So in terms of the public school system, again, whatever changes need to be made, and it doesn't really matter if it's block scheduling or curriculum or things like that, setting clear goals and objectives and having measurable outcomes is the way, is the way to go. So the idea is to set people up for success. I know the question's about accountability. But accountability focuses a lot on punishment if things go wrong. And I would rather set up the system for success because that's better for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Pan, and Ms. Reese.
So I'll start with the fact that arts teachers are experts in many, many areas, and we do turn to them for advice on many of our committees. In fact, our curriculum committee, where many teachers do sit, they provide their insight for us on many programs. And and because of them, we've been able to bring in many exciting classes that we don't have at a lot of other schools. And because of the talent of our teachers, for example, we have a dual enrollment program where our students earn college credits because our teachers are so skilled at the high school level that they qualify to teach college-level courses and save our students thousands of dollars. So we do turn to our teachers, even on the Student Services Committee. We, there, our teachers are doing wonderful things. Is there room for improvement for sharing with the community? Absolutely. I think there should be more parent universities, and I think they should be on topics. We have started with parent universities for many years, but on different topics ranging from transportation to educating, different, all our learners. So thank you. My time is up.
Thank you. Dr. Figueroa?
Thank you. When it comes to accountability, the board's job is not to run the district, but is to make sure that the district is run well. So that accountability really lies on the superintendent. And the superintendent should have, and I think, Dr. Braun, you had mentioned it before when you spoke, should have a list of things that he or she needs to get accomplished each year. There should be marked goals for weekly, monthly, quarterly, to make sure that the accountability is there. So from a board perspective, it's the superintendent that has to be held accountable. But the superintendent has tremendous experts right here in our schools, our teachers, our support staff, our nurses, our counselors, our principals. These are people who shouldn't just be on education committees. They should be involved in facilities. They should be involved in other things as well, because they have that expertise of being in the school with our children every day. Those are the people I want to go to and say, hey, what do you need? We want to support you. And I think that's something that our superintendent should be able to do and should be held accountable, to make sure that our experts get a chance to be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Felko?
So last week, I attended a info session for NJ SBA. That's the New Jersey School Board Association. I try to study before I show up to take my test, if you know what I mean. And I learned some interesting things that a lot of schools across our district, across our state do. There are mission statements, vision statements, and district goals typically published on the district website. Additionally, you can find your finalized working budget and other things. Now, me being the person I am, I immediately heard this in the meeting and then went to my phone and started Googling. I did find the tentative budget. I didn't find an active link for the finalized budget, found no vision statement, no mission statement, no district goals, just a philosophy. And the philosophy is well and good, but without practical application and a logical progressive sequence of going forward to collect information and improve our district, a philosophy is just a mantra. It's not going to get us to where we need to go. Accountability means understanding the org chart. The board is a group of visionaries. We have one employee, the superintendent, who is to execute the district goals. Those public goals should be available and easily measured against the progress of our district. So simply by employing basic suggestions by our state level, we can increase the accountability in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Figueroa?
So we're talking about accountability to changes to student scheduling, to students' curriculum, to any of the resources or materials that are used in the classroom. Accountability should come after the fact that it's already been implemented. When parents speak up asking for for clarification, those things should come beforehand. Parents, families should know about changes to curriculum. Parents, families should know about changes to block scheduling. Like, for instance, when my son is now receiving one less English class this year compared to the two previous years, I found out after back-to-school night, I found out after friends of mine reached out to me because they have students in eighth or ninth grade and saying, wait, my child in seventh grade this year is receiving less English or math this year than they have in the past two years. That's not having accountability. If anybody spoke up, I would, I, as a parent, would never have known that students for the past two years were receiving English every day compared to this year with one. When you make changes, you need to provide professional development for students, for teachers, so that they can teach the curriculum to fidelity. You need to have resources so that the teachers can teach to the students. And those class sizes need to kept, be kept small so that you can implement the curriculum and reach all the learners. That's how you have accountability when you make changes that affect students and teachers.
Thank you very much. All right, our next question. Mr. Donish, we're going to start with you. In East Brunswick and in districts all over the state and country, it has been becoming increasingly difficult to fill vacancies. This includes all types of positions, both certificated and non-certificated. What will you do as a board member, both to attract new staff and to support staff in this district so that they remain? And what would you do as a board member to improve low staff morale to increase retention?
So I think a lot of what contributes to low staff morale in a lot of different areas, not even just education, is not understanding policies that are being implemented on you. And I feel like that's happened a lot in our education system here, is that teachers are having policies implemented on them, not with them. Now, we've talked a lot about increased communication between teachers and the administration, but what does that really look like? It looks like us getting our teachers together in a room on their time and us making time as a board to meet with them so that we can understand what they need to do their jobs better. Now, seemingly, what would flow from that is higher staff morale, which would attract teachers towards our district. I think that a great working environment is important to anybody in any professional sphere. Not only is salary important, which I think that we can, we provide very competitive rates to other districts in around our area, but what we need to understand is how can we provide our teachers with what they need to be very inspired to do the job that they want? A teacher that loves teaching is going to love what they're at because it allows them to teach while being inspired. And I think that if we And I think that if we can bolster the things that our district does well, to be with our teachers, and to help our teachers feel inspired, morale will boost, and we will attract more educated, more educators, more certificated educators to our district to improve our education.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mr. Gasswami.
So I will say, first of all, the working conditions and the professional development are the two important things a teacher will look for. So if you are giving a professional development, the teacher is abreast with the latest things, and they feel it easy for them to teach, and make the students also get interested when they are listening to the teacher. So teacher retention, if we give this professional development the reduction of the turnover, and then the teacher will also follow the best practices, and teacher will also stick with the current educational standards. They will not teach the old-fashioned thing. If we keep on professional development for them every time, every three months, they also get latest trend, and they know what they have to do. And this will also bring the positive culture and environment in the classroom. Teachers and student relationship is very critical. If the student feel interested when they listen to the teachers, then the relationship becomes strong, and teacher and student, they both progress as well in both of their careers. The teachers progress in their careers, the students progress in their careers. So I will say the impact here will be the teachers will not leave this town and go to other towns, because if they are taken care of by the proper availability of the resources by the township, then they stay, then they don't leave. And again, I will say that the burnout and the stress levels also will come down, because they know what they are going to teach, what they are teaching.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Levitt.
This is a multifaceted question. I talked to the board a couple of weeks ago, saying that East Brunswick used to be a sticky place, meaning if a teacher moved from living around here to moving an hour away, they would still want to work in East Brunswick, because there was something here that made it special. But the last few years, some of our stick has worn off. So what we need to do is make it sticky again. I think the first thing we need to do is improve staff morale. Not allowing teachers to be individuals in the classroom, but telling them not only what to teach, but how to teach it. Or not being trusted to have a coffee pot, or not being able to put something up on the walls, or if anybody steps out of line, getting a threatening email from somebody in central administration. All those things knock morale down, and that's something the board needs to be aware of and take action on immediately, if not sooner. We need to develop relationships with the educational schools around, CAIN, TCNJ, et cetera, and get the best student teachers in here, and make the experience great, so, again, we're sticky and they want to stay. But to do that, we need to do some marketing. We have to make people here happier, so when they're posting online, or talking to their friends, or they're going on podcasts or whatever, they're not bashing the town, but they're really talking about how great it is again.
Thank you. And Dr. Braun.
I am so excited to hear almost everybody talk about the teachers. Hello? Yeah, they're the ones that are the most important, they're the ones that get it. We have over 1,000 educators. Think of the collective expertise and knowledge that you have right there at your disposal. All these people who have ideas, because, you know, teachers, we're really good at planning. We love to plan, we love to talk, we have lots of ideas, don't we? And we love to share those with ideas, because we understand the importance of collaboration. And that's the way things get done. And we have now a toxic work environment, and I know I'm going to get accused, oh, you're being negative, sorry, but it's true. It's true, tell me it's not true. And the thing is, you can't even talk to the teachers. The teachers are not allowed to talk about their working environment. Because if they would, if they could, they would spill their guts. Teachers are not allowed to talk to the Board of Education members either. I know, because I tried it and I got in trouble. Oh, well. How is a board member, do you know that there's a problem if the teachers can't come to you? If it's being covered up? Because that's what's happening. And I don't care, frankly, if I make it on the board or not, I want the community to know that this is going on, that our teachers are suffering, and that it's unneeded.
Thank you very much, Dr. Braun and Dr. Pan.
Okay, so staffing, the staffing shortage for teachers and ESPs is a national problem. And so it needs to really be addressed at all levels. This isn't just something that's just affecting East Brunswick, it's not something that's affecting Middlesex County, not just New Jersey, it's all over, all over the place. And I come from a family of teachers, and I'm one myself, you know, at the med school. I know that people go into teaching because they love teaching. So the question then is, how bad do things have to be for a teacher to think of doing something else for a living instead? And so we do need to focus on the working environment for teachers and ESPs. We need to listen to their needs, we need to fill in the gaps that they're seeing, and we need to be advocates for them. And here again, I have some personal experience with this, again, with my time being in charge of the pediatric medical education program. Because we do place medical students with community pediatricians in their clinics. That's a time suck for them. They actually lose productivity in doing this. But I've been able to make things easier for the community pediatricians to work with students in their clinic, without taking a big hit. So I know that there are solutions for this. The other thing that we can also do is come up with some creative ideas and thinking to create time efficiencies for teachers, because compensation is a given. We need to maintain that to attract great teachers to our system.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. And Ms. Reese.
So it's a multi-part question. I understand the importance of valuing our teachers. I come from a family of teachers. My mom taught Spanish for 27 years in New York City. My grandma taught elementary school in Brooklyn for 30 years. I have taught as well. I value our teachers, and I'm sorry to hear that some teachers don't feel comfortable, and I apologize. I got a text today from a teacher, so if you're having an issue, feel free to reach out to our board members, because we do want to hear, you are important to us. September 2024 is the first year since pre-COVID, where all teaching positions were hired prior to the start of the school year. There may have been one here or there, because somebody gave birth or what have you, but that's a fact I wanted to put out there. We held our inaugural educator signing day for EBHS seniors. My daughter was there, she's going to TCNJ, she was part of the Teacher Cadet Program, I'm very proud of her, she's going to be an elementary school teacher. So we value teachers in our home, and I want to make it clear that we are doing a lot of different things, I just was given the sign again, but we are doing a lot of things to recruit.
Thank you.
Oh, 30, oh, I have 30 seconds. So, sorry, I have glasses. So we are expanding our recruitment efforts, and we do have relationships with TCNJ, with Rutgers, all our local state schools, and we are encouraging our students to come back. In fact, in the Teacher Cadet Program, if you teach in an elementary school here, you assist, when you come back as a graduate of a college, you get an interview.
Thank you, thank you this time, for real. And Dr. Figueroa.
Yes, thank you. Well, I am concerned, honestly, not so much about hiring new, because I understand there'll be more cuts. I am concerned, though, about keeping the good teachers that we do have. I would caution teachers, because I do understand that you're not supposed to be reaching out to board members. So be careful in that regard. And I think that is a mistake. I think the resource of having a teacher, or a bus driver, or a principal, reach out to a board member for good, or maybe not so good, would be helpful in this community. I think that, again, I'll say, as I said it before, our best resource to help our children are the people who are with them every day. And that's their teachers, their support staff, all of you. Those people, those are the ones that we really want to make sure that we support. And hopefully, you know, our ranking in town has gone down tremendously over the last few years, I'm very concerned about that. You know, why is that? How do we stop that from happening and start moving up the ladder again, which I think we can do? So I do think supportive of our staff and what they do will be critical for us moving forward. And I think that's where we have to go. Support them, make sure that they know how important they are. When was the last time you got a pat on the back from somebody from central office?
Thank you very much. And Dr. Falco.
Shucks, how do I follow that? I will tell you that I believe the best way to inspire morale is to create a stable environment where there is compassion and empathy for educators and support staff. I'd like to tell you a story without using names. There was a teacher who delayed personal medical care for over a year before retiring, so that she could ensure that someone would be hired after her with the same passion and dedication. This was for a kindergarten class. That teacher, who was hired with a master's in special education, is no longer with us because of budget cuts. Another person, hired for three months to our district, special education teacher, lost for budget cuts. How can we have these amazing educators stay in this district if we don't give them the respect and the stability they deserve? My mom taught in this district for 25 years. I believe that East Brunswick educators are some of the finest on the planet. I don't just say that because I have former educators in the room, or possibly on the dies with me. I say that because I truly believe it. And I think that to help with hiring, if they see the shift in culture, if they see that the people who are in charge, and central administration and the board, are truly a supportive environment, then people will stick in this district and have amazing careers like my mom did and change lives.
Thank you. And Ms. Figueroa.
So when students' needs aren't being met, they act out. They need supports. The teachers are left dealing with students who are acting out in addition to trying to teach curriculum, trying to reach all the other learners that do want to learn. We need supports for our teachers, for our families, for our students, especially focusing on mental health. Because without that, they're suffering, they're stressed out. The students, the teachers, and the families need supports too, to help their students who are struggling as well. Many of the time, the families don't know how to handle, or they don't know where to go. So we need these supports to help our families, our teachers, our students. With increased class sizes, with loss of resources, teachers are left trying to just, being told, just get it done, teach to the test, increase test scores, and it creates a very stressful environment for teachers. The students feel it, it is very difficult in a classroom where teachers are stressed, because they have pressures, they're being told that they're being looked at, they're being evaluated based on test scores. And now the students also feel it, because they have the pressure also to learn. So we definitely need to listen to our teachers. Teachers should be able, should be supported, they should be able to share big ideas without fear of any repercussions when they have an issue. They should feel that they're heard and that they're listened to, and it's important.
Thank you, Ms. Figueroa. Okay. And then Dr. James.
Thank you. Thank you. It is incredibly difficult to be an educator. In this space, things are always changing. You know, Columbia always has a new curriculum, there's always a new idea, there's something else to adapt to. It depends on who the president is, or who's at some other level of government. And of course, we absolutely have to focus on a school environment that is compassionate and forgiving, that supports our students and our staff. We have some excellent social and emotional health programs here in East Brunswick, and we need to work to make those anti-bullying, anti-bias mental health programs stronger for our students and for our teachers. And we can use outside resources to help us do that, even with budget constraints. We can work with groups like the Alliance, with the Interfaith Council, to give our students and our teachers what they need. It was so hard to come back from COVID, okay? My classrooms have so many more issues than they used to. That's the reality, and we are not all the way there yet, and it is hard, right? And the resources aren't really there anywhere to deal with this. That's not specific to East Brunswick, but it's tough. We want to support our people. Look, as an educator, do I ever want to go and talk to admin? The reality is, no, I don't, okay? Some of that is just there, that antithetical relationship. But the board's not admin. We can see the East Brunswick Education Association as a partner. We can communicate, we can do anonymous surveys, we can build some of those bridges back, right? And I think we can't only focus on the negative. Yes, we need to make some serious changes, but when we're telling everyone that everything is terrible, they believe that.
Thank you, Dr. James. All right, we're going to go on to our next lightning round set of questions. We're going to pull one name and go right down the list. So you will have a one-word answer, unless we tell you otherwise. All right. So we're going to start with you, Ms. Reese. All right, there you go.
Lucky me.
All right. East Brunswick High School, renovate or replace? You have 15 seconds.
Replace, but we need more data.
Okay, one word, one word, one word. All right. Dr. Figueroa.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure.
Only kidding.
East Brunswick High School, renovate or replace?
Investigate.
Oh, boy. Okay. And Dr. Falco.
What Lou said.
All right. Ms. Figueroa.
Agree, investigate.
Okay, we are really getting there. All right, Dr. James.
We're not holding to the one word here, so replace, preferably, but with more data.
Okay. All right, let's just review. It's one-word answer, all right? I've been given some leeway, but we're not going to let it anymore. So Mr. Donish, renovate or replace?
Renovate.
Renovate, thank you. All right. And Mr. Gasswami.
Renovate.
Okay. Mr. Levitt.
Depends.
This is a tough crowd tonight. Dr. Braun.
Uh-uh.
Renovate or replace? All right. I'm going to hold you to that. Dr. Pan. All right. Ready? Dr. Figueroa, this is your chance at one-word answer. Okay? And we will only accept the answers I provide, all right? Elementary redistricting, yes or no? Dr. Falco.
Yes.
Ms. Figueroa.
No.
Dr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Donish.
No.
Mr. Gasswami.
Yes.
Beat me to it. Okay, Mr. Levitt.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Braun.
Yes.
Dr. Pan.
likely yes.
All right. Ms. Reese.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, starting with you, Dr. Falco. Board members responding to comments at meetings, yes or no?
Robert's rolls.
Yes or no?
No.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Figueroa.
Yes.
Dr. James. Mr. Donish.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Yes. Board members responding to comments at meetings.
Is it comments by the public, or comments by other board members?
I say you, take your best shot.
Oh, I'll say no.
Mr. Gasswami.
Comments by public, no.
Mr. Levitt.
No.
Dr. Braun.
Yes.
Dr. Pan.
Yes.
Ms. Reese.
Yes.
Dr. Figueroa.
Absolutely, yes.
You already had you. Okay, all right. We're going to start with Ms. Figueroa at this point, correct? In one phrase, one phrase, what do you see as the district's most pressing issue?
The most pressing issue right now is holding accountability, having a connection with the community, bringing it back and healing, and making sure that this district continues to thrive and not deplete.
Thank you. Dr. James.
Communication, getting curriculum back to where it was, dealing with budget issues, handling facilities changes.
Okay. Mr. Donish.
Communication, accountability, transparency, and community.
Mr. Gasswami.
I will say communication, trust, and transparency.
Mr. Levitt.
Rebuilding trust with the community in the form of transparency, and rebuilding morale in the schools between administration and the buildings.
Okay, Dr. Braun.
Our schools and our community need healing. It has to start somewhere, and I want to have it start here with us.
Dr. Pan.
So I've mentioned this before, but communication and trust. Communication, to me, is the root cause of many of the issues that we're facing today. By establishing trust, then the-
By establishing trust, then the people involved will have the space to come up with good solutions to that problem.
Ms. Reese?
Supporting our teachers, supporting our students, supporting mental health programming, and inclusivity in our community.
Dr. Figaroa?
Well, it starts with accountability. We have to keep the administration accountable, and make sure that we start to build morale again, because it is low, and make sure that we support our students and our families the best we can in every way.
Dr. Falco?
Improved community relations and long-term fiscal solvency.
Terrific, okay. One more, one phrase. What will be your first priority if elected in November? And Dr. James, we're going to start with you.
Well, if elected in November, my first priority would be continuing to build out our focus on communication with the public to bring more parent and community voices forward. And of course, we need to work now to address our budget challenges and to pivot back to the conversation on the high school.
Thank you. Mr. Donish?
Communication, but I won't rely on anyone to provide that for our community. I will take it upon myself, I won't even ask for help, I'll do it, you know, on my own if I have to, but the community needs to know what's happening. And that's the first thing I'm going to do.
Okay, Mr. Gasswami?
The pressing issue today is the budget, budgets, right? So we know, everyone is hearing budget cuts. So I will look into the budgets so that we don't face the same thing which has happened this time, talk to more teachers, on all the teachers, and all the support staff, and see what are their problems. Because in the last three months, I could not have done these, these things, which I am going to do after November.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt?
Work with the other eight members of the board to create one cohesive team so that we operate in a unified way. We need to be able to disagree about issues in a healthy way without causing divisiveness or destructive behavior where there's different blocks of, of the board.
Dr. Braun?
Class, uh, excuse me, staff climate survey, gather data, and make data-driven decisions, depending on what the staff tells us.
Thank you. Dr. Pan?
I'm going to sound like a broken record, but again, communication and trust. Again, that, to me, that's the root cause of all the issues that we're facing, and we'll be able to come up with better solutions once that's reestablished. The other immediate thing, of course, is the budget.
Ms. Reese?
Absolutely, the budget, also additional anti-bias programming, more outreach opportunities for the community, and also to reach out to our students, as I mentioned, the Student Life Committee, to try to make sure that our students have a say as well as our teachers.
Great. Dr. Figaroa?
The first thing that, that I would do would be to make sure that as board member, that we're working closely with the other board members. I think it's important that we do work as a team. This district needs it, I think it's important that we start to heal. And I think the first action I would like to see is a, is a big event where we have teachers, families come out and explain what it is that they need, what's happening, what do you need, let's work on those things.
Great. Dr. Falco?
My immediate priorities are our budget and improving the culture in our schools for both students and teachers. Thank you.
Ms. Figaroa?
Building relationships and trust within our schools and also with the community.
Terrific, okay. Everyone, take a deep breath, we're going into the final one minute of the evening. So each of you will have one minute for closing remarks, and we're going to hold to that one minute, since the last round, you didn't really stick to one phrase. So we're going to hold you to this one, okay? And we're going to start with Dr. Pan.
So first of all-
Thanks to the EBPA for putting this event together, thanks for everybody else here on the panel for participating, and most of all, thanks to all of you here in the audience and online, or wherever you're watching this. This is a really important thing for our town, and I love to see all the engagement here. I, I've spent a lot of time over the past couple of months talking to the people in town about their concerns and the, and how they view our school district. And I've heard a lot of different opinions. It's been, it's been a fascinating process for me, I've learned a ton. But the reason I'm bringing that up, again, broken record time, communication and trust, and I think that is a good example of my communicate, my commitment to that idea. I've spent my entire career acting that way, with the teams that I worked with, with the patients and families that I've worked with, and it's-
Thank you, Dr. Pan.
Thank you, and happy Rosh Hashanah for those who celebrate.
And Ms. Reese?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. If reelected, I will continue to advocate for programs to promote a positive and inclusive school environment which features opportunities for all our learners. During my tenure, I have played a key role in supporting later school start times, mental health programming, coding classes, improved indoor air quality, and an inclusive school calendar. I will continue to advocate for additional anti-bias programming and outreach opportunities. It would be my honor to continue to serve our East Brunswick school community, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Figaroa?
Thank you. Well, I'm a father, I am a educator, I'm a community member, brought my family to live here once I started working in the district 13 years ago, and we've been here for about 12. We love this community. Our, our children are thriving, and they're doing really well, and they love going to school, and they love being a part of this great community. I want to make sure that we continue doing this. I want to make sure that for those families who have approached me, those parents who have said, it's not going as well for my child or for my family, that they get support. For the teachers out there who said, who have told me time and time again, Lou, we need change, we need support, we're being asked to do things that we just can't accomplish right now. The deck, the deck is stacked against us. Well, we need to support them. Because again, they are the ones that are with our children, our most valuable assets every day and all day. And we want to make sure we give them what they need. So I want to thank not only the people here today, but I also want to thank the teachers and faculty for doing what you do every day. We appreciate it, and we see you.
Thank you, Dr. Figaroa, and on to Dr. Falco.
I have a lot of gratitude for all of you tonight, those of you in attendance and those of you watching, those of you who have helped to put us up here tonight. It's important that our community has good communication, I think we've heard that word 473 times today. And I'm going to say it again, and communication doesn't stop after this minute. I am freely available to speak with anyone, I want to hear your concerns. I care about representing your thoughts and your ideas on this Board of Ed when elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Figaroa?
Okay. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and thank you for all the support that I've received during this run. I just want to leave you with this, I am not a politician, I am not looking to use the Board of Education to further my political career. As a mom and a teacher, my passion lies within the school. I want what's best for all students. I'm an advocate for students, teachers, and families alike. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. James?
Thank you. I also thank everyone for the opportunity to be here, I truly appreciate it. And if I have the honor and privilege of serving a full three-year term, I will work hard for you. I will focus on communication, curriculum, and facilities, and spend time analyzing the impact of our financial decisions. There's a lot of work to do, so we need to focus on facts. I can work collaboratively with others, and I'm focused on putting student needs first. I want to make sure that our kids get the same education that the last generation of East Brunswick kids got, and that they get to pursue their dreams. I want to make sure our property values stay high, because our school's reputations are strong. That's why so many of us are here. I get it, I also moved to East Brunswick so that my children could attend a high-performing public school. I truly value that, and I have a young family, I am invested, I am in this for the long haul.
Thank you. Mr. Donish?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and hearing what I have to say. First, I want to realize, I want everybody to realize that teachers make a difference. They, they make such a significant difference that it's incomprehensible between a teacher that's really inspired and feels supportive and one that doesn't. And as a recent graduate of East Brunswick, I, I'm shaped by the educators that taught me, supported educators that were incredibly inspired to do what they do, inspired me to do what I'm doing now, which is to pay them back. And I, I want all of us to understand that I, I'm running on communication and transparency. I want everybody to know that every, all, everybody who's standing here today, post-November 5th, will be a representative of what you want to happen in our school districts. What you think is the best thing for your families, for the students, for the teachers, for the future of our district. So I encourage everyone here to talk to the candidates, to really let your voices be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Donish, and on to Mr. Gasswami.
So first of all, thank you to everyone who has, who is attending here and listening to us. So I will say, everyone here is for the same goal today, and this should not be like this, 10 people running, it should not be like this. We have never seen 10 people running in the board, but we are all working towards the same goal. So I will say to serve our school and students, teachers, and everyone is our main, should be the main goal. And I would like to request everyone that if you have a trust, if you want the finances, if you want to fix, then please vote for sex. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt?
I'm going to talk fast. Thanks to Doctors Mbicki and Mr. Finnegan for arranging this tonight and the whole EBEA. I want to elaborate on the board response question. I feel as a unified unit, one person can't speak on behalf of the entire board, that's why I said no. There's lots to digest here tonight, you heard a lot of problems, you heard some solutions. Just want you to know that I am passionate about making things happen here. I am an innovator, I am a business-savvy innovator, I'm a collaborator, and a strong advocate for a safe environment for kids to be kids, teachers to teach, and both without bullying or intimidation or retaliation. And I'm tenacious about seeing what I think is right come to fruition. Most of all, I want East Brunswick to be sticky again. Thank you.
And Dr. Braun?
Well, fortunately, I'm a lifelong learner, and I've learned recently that there's a lot of overlap between being a junior high teacher and being involved in local politics. Amazing, I've been, this is, I've been preparing for this my whole life. Now, one thing we didn't talk about, we're a special ed, that's an important issue to me. My son has autism, my grandson has autism, these are things that we have not talked about, but they are vital, that we make sure that we are providing our most vulnerable students with what they need in order to thrive and grow. And sometimes that may mean they need an added district placement when they're young. And that way, then, they can come back in district and have the skills that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the East Brunswick Education Association, that concludes our program. We would like to thank our panel for their willingness to step out and volunteer. And we would like to thank our audience for sticking with us and listening and doing your due diligence before you vote on November 5th. And Chris would also like to say a few words.
I'd like to also, once again, just thank all our candidates for coming tonight, making this such a great evening. I'd like to thank all of the EBA members that helped to make this happen. Let's thank Anthony and team from EBTV, and Adam from The Playhouse for making this like a really, a really professionally-run, run event. And thank you for all the community involvement, for submitting questions, for showing up tonight. We do have, we do have the space until 9 o'clock, so we would invite, our candidates will be in the, in the foyer there, and you're welcome to, if they have literature, they can pass to you, and, and you can certainly come and talk to them. So I would invite everybody to retire to the lobby, and you can talk with our candidates. Thank you very much for coming.